Kick off the meeting today for the twenty fifth, twenty eighth of May. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the Kalkadun and Injolengi people, traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. Please note this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded by remaining in chambers. It is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to welcome Marlene Robertson here today from the Anglican Church, and she's going to do the prayer for us. So, welcome, Marlene.
Good morning, everyone. So, let us pray. The Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those whose sin against us. Lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, for ever and ever. Amen. Jesus said, "Follow me and love one another, as I have loved you." So, we pray for the meeting now. You are all here to decide what is best for the people of Mount Isa. We hope with God's help, you make your decisions in fairness, wisdom, and honesty through Jesus Christ's sake. Amen. So, may God bless yous all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. So, your bid's over here, but you're welcome to stay if you like and join for the meeting. Oh, you can stay or leave. Now, it's up to you. You're welcome to stay?
No, I have to leave. I have another appointment, but maybe next time I'll stay.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for joining us. I would now like to move that an apology be received from councillor John Tully and councillor John Doyle be accepted, and a leave of absence be granted. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, deputy.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Public participation. Oh, sorry. Do we, yes, show our hands? We're all in favour of the apology. Sorry, team. Not on my game. Okay, a representative from the RSL has been invited. Casual for cause. So, today, in the chambers, we have two members of the RSL, Rick Lehman, who is the vice president, and Daryl Sadington, who is the treasurer. I'll just invite the guys up into the middle so you're on the live stream. Thank you, councillor Coglan.
Can I stay in the photo today with me jersey?
All right. As you're all aware, the council staff have casual for a cause on a Friday where they go around and raise funds for worthy charities within our community. So, I'd like to welcome the RSL here today to accept the donation of $213.15. I just want to thank the RSL also for all the great work they do in the community, planning and helping with our events, you know, such as ANZAC Day and Remembrance Day, and also for making me feel so welcome. They had a wonderful event over at the RSL, which is located at the Irish Club now, on ANZAC Day. And, yeah, it was a great afternoon and very well attended. So, thank you, Rick.
Look, everybody, on behalf of the RSL, Mount Isa sub-branch, and the RSL in general, this is a great honour for us to have this presentation to us, and thank you very much for all your hard work. And thank you to all the councillors and all the staff at the council who made this possible for us. And this will certainly go into our coffers to make somebody's life a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Not a problem.
Do I have a mover for item five, minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the...
Yep.
It's saying twenty eighth of May. Twenty eight...
Thirty of April.
Oh, thirtieth of April, 2025.
I'll just move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the thirtieth of April, 2025, be confirmed as true and correct record.
All in favour?
Second.
Oh, second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Councillor Coglan, all in favour?
Yep.
Thanks. Item six point one, outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the twenty third of May, 2025.
I'll just move that the council receives and notes the outstanding actions from the previous council meetings as of the twenty third of May, 2025.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. Do I have a second?
Seconded, deputy.
Thank you, deputy mayor. All in favour? Carrie. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare for this meeting?
No.
No? Okay, it's time for the mayoral minute. What I thought I'd do this week is just give you a little bit of an update, because I feel like I've been here, there, and everywhere. So, as you know, last week I ended up going to Brisbane to meet with the other two levels of government that operate in our area, both of the CATAs, along with industry, to try and come up with a solution of, you know, what could be done for the economy on the whole, to help with the smelter operating conditions, but also help other smaller tier-two and tier-three mines in the area. So, you know, we came up with a bit of a plan, and then we were lucky enough to get a meeting with the premier pretty much straight away. So, last Thursday night at eight thirty, we had a meeting with the premier, which I think was really fruitful. I think he listened to the advice, and he did, you know, give a commitment that he was really keen to get this situation sorted. Obviously, it's going to involve the help from the federal government as well. So, we're getting a plan together about, you know, what's required from each level of government and see what they're willing to do to help us out. Because, you know, as you know, if the smelter ends up closing, it's not going to be great for anyone here. And I think yesterday, being at the Critical Minerals Conference in Townsville, it was highlighted that everyone in Townsville is taking this issue very seriously. And I think having, you know, us in Townsville lobbying together has really got us some great attention on that. You would have seen, you know, the issue was on the front page of the Townsville Bulletin yesterday. We're in the Bulletin again today, because, you know, Townsville understands that if the smelter and the refinery both close, that's going to cost about seventeen thousand jobs between both sites, which, you know, is pretty bad for the whole of North Queensland economy, to be honest. So, you know, while we're trying to remain positive, keep positivity within our community, because as I keep saying, we have the $680 billion worth of critical minerals in the ground, we need to come up with a plan that can fix the operating environment for all parties, and also help us retain some of the wealth in our communities. So, you know, we can make our towns great places to live, work, and invest. So, that's been a lot of the push that, you know, has been happening over the last couple of weeks. On the social front, I just want to remind everyone that I think the Camral Will Camp Draft is coming up this weekend, and there's races on this weekend. No?
No, next week.
Next weekend. And I know the Rodeo Queens are doing some fundraising events this weekend, and I'm looking forward to heading to one of those on Saturday night. So, yeah, thank you. There are no notices of motion. Do I have a mover for ten point one, corporate plan, 2025, 2030?
I'll just move that council adopts the 2025 to the 2030 corporate plan.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Would you like to speak to that, anybody?
I'll just read the overview if you want. Council's current corporate plan expires at the end of June, 2025, and the new plan has been developed for the period of 2025 to 2030. The plan has been developed to suit council's strategic objectives for the next five years with consideration to council's existing adopting strategic strategies and plans. Consultation with the elected members resulted in a document which combined elements of the corporate plan and operational plan. The strategic elements, which were separated into the current corporate plan document, and the remaining elements will be included into the 2025, 2026 operational plan.
Madam mayor, if I could just make a comment. The corporate plan is obviously a legislative provision, but the way Mount Isa's economy keeps moving, I would suggest that we sit down later, potentially later in the year, and keep revising the corporate plan and make it a living document, because you usually do adopt a corporate plan that sits there. But I think because of how everything's changing so quickly, I think we just need to be on, you know, on top of that, because it's a document that the state government looks at quite often when you're putting in funding applications. And I think we need to make sure we're on top of that.
Yeah. Yeah, one thing I did, I guess, forget to mention too, the meeting with the premier, he was very, I guess, certain that copper string is still going to go ahead and it is going to come to this area. So, that was one of the good takeaways from the meeting as well. And obviously, that would influence the corporate plan.
If I might, I'd just like to say that as a first-term councillor, it's been a real positive to participate in the development of this document, being that it only gets renewed every five years. I think those efforts being done last year, you know, probably compounded what was already a very steep learning curve, but it's given us a unique opportunity to try and put our own priorities into what is a very important document, and that our council officers refer to frequently when they're looking for direction and trying to execute the business of council.
Thank you, councillor Ballard. All in favour? Carrie. Item ten point two, updated policies for adoption. Do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'll move. Recommend that council adopts the following statutory policies. Number one, the complaint about a public official policy, version five. And number two, councillor investigation policy, version four.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Ballard, would you like to speak to that, councillor Coglan?
Yeah, I, as you know, I'm into policies and procedures and that. Yeah, this is just pretty much a roll-over. It's pretty good.
Okay. Thank you. All in favour? Carrie. Item ten point three, disposal of council asset to Haviland Australia DHA3 drover aircraft.
I'll move that council resolves to dispose of the council asset, the Halavard Australia DHA3 drover aircraft, in its present as is condition through the donation to the RFDS Queensland section, and that council approves the relocation of the asset from its current position within George McCoy Park to the new RFDS and Life Flight Base located at the Mount Isa Airport, with the condition that the removal and restoration be facilitated and funded by the RFDS.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the motion?
Coglan, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think this is a really good initiative. Flying Doctor, the idea for the Flying Doctor service actually came because of Mount Isa. We need to remember that. I know it was started, well, they fight over where it was started, but it was because of an injured miner that Dr Flynn flew from the Currie to pick him up and take him back. And that was the idea, that's the seed for the idea of the Royal Flying Doctor Service. So, I think it's a good thing to have it there.
Yeah, thanks councillor Coglan. And as someone who's been on council for quite a while, been to many meetings about the drover, held state, community stakeholder engagements about the drover, I'm glad that it's getting a home. I think everyone in the community is going to be really pleased that it's going to be done up, and, you know, it's going to actually make the outlook coming from the airport into town look great. Being able to drive past that, and everyone will be able to see it a lot more easily than in the park where it currently is. So, I think it's a good solution that everyone in the community will be happy with. So, yeah, great work, RFDS. Anyone else? All in favour? Carrie. Okay, item ten point four, proposal to reschedule June meeting date. Do I have a mover?
I'd like to recommend that council reschedule the ordinary council meeting date from the twenty sixth of June, 2025, to the third of July, 2025.
Thank you, deputy. Do I have a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll just second it.
Thanks councillor Crowther. We're looking at moving that meeting because both the CEO and I will be in Canberra at the Yalga Conference and meeting with politicians. We've already got quite a few meetings booked in, and I think at this time, it's really important that we attend. So, that's why we're looking to change the meeting. All in favour?
Could I ask two questions?
Yes.
Firstly, it says the legislation must meet at least once in each month. So, if we're going to July, are we not meeting that legislation?
So, we've got a budget meeting scheduled for the eighteenth of June, so that covers that bit of the legislation.
Okay. Second thing is, this is really, we've talked about everything the week before, and we have these workshops the week before to hash out what's in these meetings. And I think you two will be there. So, I just wonder why we're upsetting the pattern to have, I mean, you're not going to be at the president of the meeting, but we would have talked about everything that's going on at the meeting beforehand.
We're not upsetting the pattern. We're just asking that it be moved so that we can...
Well, I won't be present at that third of July, so...
I'd just like to answer that one. I'm quite happy, if Madam Mayor's not here, I'm quite confident that I can step into her shoes. But without the mayor and the CEO at the meeting, it's sort of a double whammy. We've got two new directors that are just starting, and I just think for the purpose of answering questions and information, it's very important that we do have the CEO here.
Okay. All in favour? Carrie. Thank you.
Against, note that I'm against that.
Do I have a mover for eleven point one, finance overview report, April, 2025?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the April, 2025, finance overview report as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Crowther.
I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome our new corporate services director, Kelvin Tyvelly. I hope I did that right. Sorry?
It's close enough.
Yeah. I didn't think I did too bad. You know, obviously, our financial performance is going to become increasingly important as the easy money becomes harder and harder to come by. So, to see Kelvin come on board and continue the good work that Glenn Hart's been doing in an interim capacity is very pleasing to myself and the rest of the councillors. We can see from month to month, we've seen there's been an increase in our recurrent revenue. That's driven largely from higher grant income subsidies and contributions. Our operating surplus ratio has decreased, but it still remains really strong and exceeds the upper threshold of 10%, which indicates we've got quite robust profitability. Our operational expenses have increased with notable rises in employee benefits, materials, and services. So, that's going to require some close monitoring moving forward. Our total borrowings decreased significantly, which reflects pretty prudent debt management. And a lot of, there's a lot of efforts that are ongoing and are yielding some really positive outcomes in our attempts to recover long outstanding debts. So, thanks to Kelvin and the team that he works with for all that they're doing in that area.
Thanks councillor Ballard, and thanks for picking up the ball there. I actually had down that I was supposed to welcome both of our new directors, Kelvin and Andrew Hobbs. Welcome to the team. And I've looked, so thank you. All in favour? Item eleven point two, Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Overview Report as of the thirtieth of April, 2025.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the April, 2025, Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Unit Finance Overview Report as presented.
Thanks councillor Ballard. Do I have a second?
Coglan, councillor.
Councillor Coglan, thank you.
Firstly, I'd like to thank the council staff for their ongoing efforts to really refine the reporting of these various business units. I think it provides a really succinct overview of the performance of those areas, and it's very helpful and easy to digest. It's also really pleasing to see that splashes, the Civic Centre and Buchanan Park are all performing better than budgeted. And, you know, that's, and they're also being well utilised. So, I think that's a great credit to the council staff that are managing those facilities.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favour? Carrie. Item eleven point three, request to repeal OM27/0624 disposal of council asset waste management, two times portable containers with ancillary shade.
I'd like to move that council approves to repeal resolution OM270624 disposal of council asset waste management, two by portable containers with ancillary shade, and the council approves to retain and utilise these assets towards a waste education centre at the waste management facility, providing education about recycling, waste diversion, and waste management to school groups and the community.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Crowther.
Thanks very much. I'd like to say that I believe that this motion reflects a sensible approach where our directors have proactively identified an opportunity to repurpose an asset that had been flagged for dispersal. And, you know, that's indicative of the sort of financial management that we're going to rely more and more on in the future. So, thanks very much to Director Chad King and his team for identifying this opportunity to save a few dollars and to repurpose some assets that are otherwise in really good condition.
Thank you. All in favour? Carrie. Okay, Community Services Reports, twelve point one, Development and Land Use Quarter Three, 2024, 2025 Overview Report.
Where's it, twelve point one?
Twelve point one, yeah.
All right. I recommend that council receives and accepts the Waste Management Quarterly Report, February, April, 2025, as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. Would you like to speak to that, councillor Coglan?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Chad for his efforts, the director, in these areas. With that, the recycling, I was asked a question, and Chad's answered it very well. It's if you, with your recycle bin, if your recycle bin is overflowing, you need it emptied more than once every two weeks, you can take it to the dump, which is on Jessup Drive, out there, and you can drop it off for free. Okay? So, the recycling is free, as long as it's just the recycle bin. And also, when you're putting your waste in, the electronic goods, you need to separate them. We need to separate our waste, because there's been a couple of fires in the transfer station because those lithium batteries. So, we just need to remind people that, you know, anything that's got a lithium battery in needs to be separated, and the people out there will tell you where to put it. Yeah, that's...
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, just on getting rid of batteries, I only found out myself the other day, just household batteries and all the rest of it. I know they say to put them in jars, but you can get rid of them at Woolies. They have a station there where you can put your batteries into. And I'd just like to ask through the chair to the CEO or the director, are we looking at our amnesty days for waste disposal this year?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I think we can have a look at that. At one of the workshops, we'll come up with a process for managing that and having a look at it for sure.
Because I know it was very popular last year, and I'd like to continue it again this year.
Did you want to speak, director, or no?
No, no, no.
Oh, no, I just saw the director going for the microphone, so I thought he might want to speak.
Through the chair, so happy to raise it at the next workshop. The opportune time is a part of the Queensland get-ready season. That way, we can leverage state government funding and avoid some of the waste levy. So, happy to table that at the next workshop.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favour? Carrie. Item twelve point two, Queensland Waste Strategy Consultation Response.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that council accepts the below response for the Queensland Waste Strategy Consultation Response.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Thank you, councillor Ballard. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I think this is a really good response. I believe the director has put this together, and we've, this community for a hundred years, we've certainly contributed our bit to the Queensland economy. And back in the sixties, when we had the big strike, it was basically a, what do they call it, martial law came in here because Mount Isa was so important. And I feel as if we just, at the moment, we seem to be getting a lot of hits. And I think the response from here shows that we're owed a little bit when it comes to this waste. And I think what's been put here is really good in defending Mount Isa. So, well done to whoever put it together.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favour? Carrie. Item twelve point three, Mount Isa Rodeo Use Requests.
Yeah, I'll move that council approves the rodeo committee request to use the Rodeo Capital of Australia logo on merchandise for the twelve-month period commencing twenty-eighth of May, 2025, and that council delegates authority to the CEO for future approval of use of the logo requests, and that council approves the temporary renaming of the arena and/or forecourt for the period of the event.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded, deputy Coglan.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Anyone like to speak to that?
Just quickly, a procedural matter, just to ensure that they had the rights there from the, when we did the acquisition of those logos, so that they probably had been on that. And then obviously, the naming to the sponsors, just to make sure it was all approved and above board.
Okay, thank you. All in favour? Carrie. Item twelve point four, Mount Isa Rodeo Today Show Support.
Yeah, I'll move that council supports the rodeo committee with the $25,000 to bring the Today Show to the Mount Isa Rodeo and delegate the CEO to finalize the term in agreements.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded, deputy Coglan.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll just quickly. I just, first up, I mean, obviously, this was a request from the Mount Isa Rodeo, and looking for support on a project that they're trying to promote, the Mount Isa Rodeo and the city. I think it's going to be a great way for the city to sort of come out and get promoted to the nation. We're obviously working, everything we've been doing lately is to try and promote and move people to the city. So, obviously, we've got to get and promote that outside of Mount Isa, which we do a lot of promoting inside Mount Isa, but we need to really start promoting Mount Isa to the nation, and this is going to be a great way to do it. The amount that's there, it might sound extreme at $25,000, but I think that when you looked at what it would cost you for spending money on advertising in Brisbane, Sydney, Melbourne, you would find that that amount would be a lot more than what this amount that they're asking for. And it's obviously, it's half of what the total amount is that's coming in. But we'll find that the, that return on investment will sort of, you'll see that will get more sort of trafficked our way. And obviously, with tourism, there's always an ever-growing market. The more we can promote to those tourists that Mount Isa can be a destination where they can see only, not just rodeo, but our sort of great surrounds. When we look at the lake, granite mines, Mary Kay mines, so there's that much opportunity for people to see. Obviously, we won't be able to showcase all of that, but if they can get some parts of it, we should be able to see that we can get a great return on investment with that.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. I think... He got in first. CEO?
I just wanted to make comment. Obviously, this is slightly controversial, but, and would like to acknowledge the media work that both the ABC does and the local paper. But I think it is an opportunity for council to highlight not only the rodeo, but our economic, the impacts that are coming for us. And I think we really do need to use whatever media opportunities we've got to highlight what's happening with the smelter. We're going to be asking for large amounts of money, both from the state and the federal government, to support us during this time when we're going through an economic crisis. And I think the money...
And I think the money, from my perspective, will be particularly well spent because we just need everybody to get on board. We're starting to see that the city of towns was starting to recognise the importance of Mount Isa to their economy. And I think we need to keep hammering that point until we actually get the help that we deserve.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Just want to reiterate, what councillor Crowther and the CEO have both said. It is a lot of money, but in terms of what we will receive from this, and it's coming at a great time. Who knows what's happening in July, after July in Mount Isa. No one actually knows what is going to happen with the closure of the copper mine. And I think this is a great chance for Mount Isa to showcase everything that they do have. Just a word to the CEO in finalising the terms of the agreement. I do believe that it should not be, we should have a say in what, how the production's going to be. I don't want someone just from rodeo being there. It has to be someone from council as well.
And could I just say that?
Councillor Coglan, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would, please. Yeah, through the chair. I'm a rate payer in this town, and we all are, and we look at the efficiency. One of the reasons I wanted to be on council was I wanted to make this the most efficient council in Australia, not just Queensland. And we're not there yet. And I'm sure the debates we have with the CEO and the director would show that we're not there yet. But I think we ask questions, we push their buttons because we're trying to get to that stage. We want to be the best. So in voting on this, like, I'm not going to look at it and go, oh, yeah, flippantly throw twenty five thousand dollars. We'll make the decision that we think is best for Mount Isa. I want people to come and live in this town. And the number of young people, young professionals that come here and love the place, we need to sell it. And I think for the money that we're spending here, the message that we're going to get out there, it is a drop in the ocean for what we're going to receive from it.
Yeah, I was, I was sitting on the fence on this one and I had a chat with Tel yesterday while I was in Townsville, obviously, at their event. And they said, you know, the money that they spent, they, it's actually, basically, the money that they're charging rodeo covers the cost of bringing the twelve people that are in the production and equipment, pretty much. They, you know, Tel thought it was a pretty good deal compared to what they paid for Townsville. And they said, you know, if you run it in conjunction with a competition like Tickets for Rodeo next year, you have the ability to put together a database of a couple of hundred thousand people, as they did. And I think for a new event, starting up, that wouldn't have a database of that size yet to be able to advertise to and promote the tickets. I think that's invaluable. And, you know, we did, when rodeo had issues and, you know, from the outset, we said there'd definitely be a rodeo. We're going to support them. I think we all acknowledge that. They might need a bit of extra help in this initial year getting started off. And I tend to agree. I think the eyes on that will be invaluable for us to get our messages out and to showcase our town. So, yeah, I have been torn over it, but I will be supporting it, yeah.
Yes, councillor Ballard.
I'm going to be voting against the motion. I fully support the comments of the other councillors, the mayor and the CEO. I believe twenty five thousand dollars does represent great value for money. And I think that hosting the Today Show is an invaluable opportunity to let Australia know that Mount Isa has an affordable property market, great schools, employment opportunities and a really attractive lifestyle. But last week we were told that, you know, council has insufficient resources to try and bolster, insufficient funds to try and bolster the resources within our infrastructure department. And I think anyone that gets around town and sees that it's still in a somewhat unkept state, there's still water leaks. For me, it just boils down to priorities. I fully support everything that everyone has said. I think it's a good opportunity. But I think the twenty five thousand, we need to sort of prioritise where those limited funds are going.
Okay, thanks councillor Ballard. I'll go to the vote. All in favour? Thank you. That is carried. Item twelve point five, Queensland Music Trails Mount Isa Blast Event Proposal.
I'll move that council approves sponsorship of the Queensland Music Trails to support the twenty twenty six Mount Isa Blast Event with the following: cash sponsorship of a hundred thousand X GST; in-kind sponsorship up to the value of thirteen thousand dollars X GST for the venue hire of Buchanan Park; in-kind sponsorship up to the value of fifty thousand dollars X GST for operational and ancillary venue costs.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Councillor Coglan.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Just quickly, again, this is, this event is probably gonna go a long way to putting Mount Isa on the map for a tourism perspective again. When you look at the perspectives of what the Queensland Music Trails have been presenting to us, again, that you'll see that the valuation, or the value of people coming to the city. And then, like councillor Coglan said, we want people to move to this city. It's gonna go a long way to making sure that we are more on the map and they're more than just mining. We've got the, then we can look in towards the, look into the music thing, which is getting a bigger and bigger following with the Grey Nomads travelling around to these events. You, when you see the actual costs of the event to what we're putting towards it, like, I think they mentioned it's about a five hundred thousand dollar budget where they're asking for a hundred thousand to then host that event. Like, if we wanted to try and put that event on ourselves, we'd be looking at over five hundred thousand. So to trial, you know, to have this publicity again, I think it might be invaluable and bring a lot more economic strength to the region.
Yeah, in terms of that, like, part of our economic development strategy and diversification was about livability. It was about events. It's on a shoulder season. They didn't want to have it in conjunction with rodeo because they wanted a completely different event to attract people to town to spend money at a different time. You know, I think that's great. And I had a bit of a chat to state development and they said that extra million dollars from that MRFAC funding, it could potentially fit into that. So we are possibly able to get support through that funding to cover that, so.
Is there an opportunity for us to lay this on the table until our next ordinary meeting? While we, you know, maybe get some clarification around its eligibility for support through MRFAC?
It is eligible, but it needs to go through the process where we have to apply and it has to go to the panel. And that takes months. So it is eligible. It'll come down to how well the application is written, I guess.
Okay, through the chair. I don't see value for money in this. It's attracting tourists and so forth, but it's not a hundred thousand dollars. It's more than that. It's in-kind. I think, I don't see this as value for money for our community. And, yeah, I just, I haven't liked the way that we've been approached about it, so I can't go with this.
I feel like it might have been appropriate to have been provided a bit more notice to try and, not from like council officers, sorry, but if Queensland Music Trails had have, if this had have been put in our radar a little earlier so that we could have tried to secure alternative funding.
Okay.
I'm quite happy to support this because I know they do a lot of work with community groups while they're here as well, which is something that I know after the Esteford we've had. It's an opportunity for our kids in the schools to, you know, work with people. And also the teachers here to work with music people. So it's not only of, and it is somewhere for locals to go and enjoy music as well. So I'll be supporting this motion.
Yeah, I think if the state government's putting in five hundred thousand dollars and then I'm relatively, you know, positive on the fact that we should be able to get that extra hundred thousand, so, yeah, I'll be supporting it.
Through the chair, could I ask, like, this music trails, we used to have the, when I first came here, we had the Bobcat Magic. And I saw that and that was, that was full of locals performing.
That is the same thing. It's the same people.
Okay, but the proposal that was presented to us had outside artists coming and playing.
Okay, so how it's worked in the past, they bring outside artists in, bigger names to attract people to travel to town, and then they supplement it with local acts. So the local acts actually have a big audience to perform in front of. Because if we just put on a festival and just had local school, you know, our dance groups and things, we're not gonna get the economic development or attract people to travel to Mount Isa for the event. So they will be involved, similar to the Bobcat Dancing, the Isa Blast.
At the, at the, at the arena there, they had all the locals, they got in, they had people playing instruments. They also had choir singing.
Megan Smith Martin wrote a song, I remember, yeah.
Okay, well, did anyone have anything else to say before we go to the vote? All in favour? Carrie. Okay.
Whoever was against it, please.
Item twelve point six, wow, Women of the World Mount Isa, twenty twenty six. Do I have a move on?
I'll just move so we can talk to it. I'll move that council supports the projects and allocate seventy five thousand in sponsorship as part of the FY twenty five budget.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
Yeah, councillor Coglan.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Would anyone like to speak to it?
I will just sort of talk that, I'll be voting against this one. I see that we've just proved two other large amounts, but not for that factor. It was just, I think the return on investment on this one wasn't there as compared to the other events.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, it's, I just, I'm against, it just seems as if people are coming in to run something and tell us what to do. And I think we've got enough good people here who could value, who could use that money that they're asking and probably do a better job. So I'm against this.
Okay.
I think the Women in Mining Event that they have every year is a great event and showcases just the size of the contribution that women have to the mining industry and certainly our local economy these days. I would, in theory, really support this, but again, it's difficult to see what the return is. And I really feel that there's people already doing great work in that area.
Thank you. Okay, we might go to the vote. All in favour? Okay, that one's declined. Item twelve point seven, graffiti management policy.
I move that council adopts the graffiti management policy as presented and that council undertakes community consultation on methods for dealing with graffiti on private property.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thanks councillor Crowther.
Yeah, okay, I've said I don't think we need a policy to do this. But if that's what's needed to get action, then all well and good. I have, ever since this word graffiti got into my mind last Wednesday at the meeting, that's all I've seen around town. So it's, it's needed, yeah. So, and if, I think what we're looking at is trying to help businesses out there remove graffiti from their buildings and so forth as well. So it won't just be council, it'll be a community effort. And I don't know if the director has more to add on that, how businesses can be, come to us for help.
Through the chair, so the report on the table is for the adoption of a graffiti policy. First of all, dealing with graffiti on council assets. That will give the administration a target in terms of cleaning up graffiti on our assets. The second piece is about doing a small piece of consultation with the community and with businesses in understanding what do they need to battle graffiti across the city. Some of the options that we've seen that other councils have taken is some graffiti kits. So some chemicals, some PPE and some materials for people to clean graffiti off their own buildings. Right through to what the very large councils do, which is a volunteer workforce who have a vehicle and a trailer and go about cleaning graffiti off the city. So our recommendation as the administration is to do some targeted consultation on this. We'll then come back to council with some options and we'll then be able to resource the community to help battle graffiti across the city.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say how disappointing it is that, you know, it's probably just a couple of people have the capacity to go around and make our town look so untidy. So, yeah, hopefully the policy has some positive effects.
Anyone else? All in favour? Carrie. Okay, item thirteen point one, Major Projects Overview Report, April, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, I recommend that council award contract twenty twenty four dash underscore fifty four, Mount Isa City Council Hydro Excavation and Sullage Vacuum Truck to STG Sales Party Limited to the value of six hundred and twenty eight thousand.
Excuse me, councillor Coglan, you're on the wrong one. We're on thirteen one.
Sorry. Well, that's not, oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that is mine, yeah.
Sorry, I'm just looking. I'm like, hang on, that's not what mine says.
Oh, I got somewhere, B. Nah. Okay, I recommend that council receives and notes the April, twenty twenty five, Major Projects Overview Report.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the motion?
Seconded.
Councillor Crowther, this is usually councillor, well, it is councillor Tully's portfolio. He would normally speak to this. Did anyone else want to mention anything?
Did we want to throw to the director?
Oh. That's mean on his first day.
Thanks, mayor. Through the chair. So not my first day, but first ordinary meeting.
Well, sorry, first ordinary meeting.
Yeah, so that is just an overview of where those projects are at. It is a dynamic update, so that's a point in time. Some of those projects have certainly moved on since this report was updated. And I look forward to providing further updates at the upcoming workshops and briefings.
Okay, thank you, director Hobbs. All in favour?
Through the chair, sorry. Just like to say that.
Snooze, you lose, deputy.
Hey.
Snooze, you lose.
I'd just like to say to the many people that I get rung up from and stopped in the street, I have already seen the director regarding Telstra Hill and he knows it is a priority for us to get the road fixed, so I know he's on to it. And, yeah, and welcome to the team. Can't wait to work with you.
Through the chair, Andrew, you lost me with that first big word. I don't know what you said after that. But anyhow, you'll have to bring things down a bit. But I just wanted to just check on the civic centre. I think we went in and had a look and things seemed to be going pretty well there. And I think the lift is, is almost ready to go in commissioning stage.
Probably a little bit of an update on that. We, we did have a door that needs to be reordered because the one that came didn't fit. So there will be a little bit of delay to that. We've followed that up, so.
Yes, I thought I was going to be opening it at the ballet, but it doesn't look that way now.
It is operational, but the outside door needs some more work done on it.
Get a caged door from the mines, mate, you're right.
That's a quick, quick fix.
I just was gonna say the flooring looks great in there.
Yeah, the flooring does look really good. Let's hope a lot of people can come along to that live stream of the ballet and check out the new flooring. It'll be a great event and it's free, I think. All in favour? Carrie. Thirteen point two, here we go, take two, councillor Coglan.
Deja vu, yes. I recommend that council award contract twenty twenty four underscore fifty four, Mount Isa City Council Hydro Excavation and Sullage Vacuum Truck to SG Sales Party Limited to the value of six hundred and twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety one dollars, excluding GST. And delegate authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate, finalise and enter into contract substantially in the terms of the contract issued with the tender.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Councillor Ballard?
If I might?
Yes, please, councillor Ballard.
You know, we can all appreciate that this represents a significant investment on council's part. I want to assure everyone that it was subject to a lot of scrutiny. I'm very satisfied with the responses we've received from the supplier. And I'm comfortable that it represents a really good investment for us.
Okay, thank you. All in favour? Carrie. Item thirteen point three, Mount Isa City Council, twenty twenty four, fifty A, MRF Hook Lift Truck and Bin Tender Report. M R F Hook Lift Truck and Bins Tender Report.
Yeah, okay. Well, I know why Tully went away, because he didn't want to speak all these big words. Um, I recommend the council award contract M I C C two O two four underscore fifty A, M R F Hook Truck and Bins to App Townsville Party Limited to the nominal value of six hundred and twenty nine thousand, five hundred and twenty one dollars, ninety six cents, excluding G S T. Approve a contingency of twenty thousand dollars, excluding G S T for any additional freight charges for the bins. And delegate authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate, finalise and enter into the contract substantively in the terms of the contract issued with the tender.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Councillor Crowther?
Um, yeah, this, this piece of equipment, like, we are the only, um, waste facility in bus, in, in Queensland that uses a, a loader to pick things up, put it in a truck and then transfer. This enables people to put it into a bin, the same as every other transfer facility in, um, in Queensland, and then the bin to be taken to the tip. So it's something that, um, is needed and it will actually, um, reduce, um, some of the cost out there in, in double handling and so forth. And the purchase of this machine, um, it was under, underwent a rigorous questioning, um, before, uh, before we come to this decision.
Perhaps just to councillor Coglan's earlier point, this will improve efficiency.
Um, through the chair, madam mayor, I'd just like to, uh, again, thank the, the staff for the feedback they gave, um, on all the questions that were asked, but also to councillor, councillor Ballard, and I know councillor Tully's not here, on, um, all the questions they, they do ask. Um, I've learnt a lot about machinery since John Tully and Dan Ballard have been on council. So, and it was, there was a lot of debate on whether or not this is a good decision, which is good to see as a council.
Okay, thank you. All in favour? Carrie. Okay, we have reached the time for general business. I'll go around, starting with councillor Ballard.
I'll try not to, uh, hog it all too much. It's been touched on, but, uh, since our last ordinary meeting, the council has welcomed two new directors. Um, they're in, you know, they're, they form a invaluable part of our executive management team and they're both very welcome additions. They have important work and, um, there's a lot in front of them, so I'd like to make both Andrew and Kelvin feel very welcome and, and thank them for choosing Mount Isa City Council. Um, it's that time of year when the North West really comes to life and there's lots of events every weekend. Um, since our last ordinary meeting, uh, the Commerce North West hosted the annual M P X. The Mount Isa Race Club had a terrific turnout for the Mother's Day races. Uh, we were lucky enough to meet with a delegation from the Tim Fairfax Foundation to hear about their work supporting mental health initiatives in primary schools. Um, just to highlight how busy, uh, the, the event schedule is this time of year this week. And the Mount Isa District Pony Club will have their dinner in the round yard. The council's Free Plant Day is on. We've got the camel camp draft and roadie on the North West Community Festival. Um, so I'd like to wish the organisers every success for those events and, um, certainly encourage people to go out and make the most of those opportunities to, um, to really enjoy those events. And, uh, the Mount Isa Race Club, Isa Cup meeting will be on next week, and no doubt it's gonna be a cracker. And once again, um, yeah, certainly encourage everybody to try and get down there and listen to a, um, a guest caller in Josh Fleming, who's going to be hot seating for our very own councillor Coglan while he's undertaking a, um, a sizable but, uh, beautiful endeavour. So, you know, certainly wish James all the very best in what he's undertaking and, um, support him fully.
Thank you councillor Ballard, councillor Crowther.
Uh, yeah, just probably to reintroduce with what councillor Ballard just spoke about with M P X. Congratulations to Commerce North West team. They're obviously a small little team and they're producing, um, not a bad little, uh, effort with their own, the, the support with the council and then the Jobs Fest, uh, that's sort of the Regional Jobs Expo they had. That ran in conjunction, though I think that got a lot of people, um, excited. We've sort of got to see a couple of assistant ministers come up for it as well, which was good to see as well, so it was great to see that. Uh, I just wanted to do a little bit of a shout out for Outback at Isa. I don't know if people did realise, but they had a bit of a disaster there. We were busted pipe, um, took down nearly all the roof in the cafe, both in the kitchen area and the out, in the seating area. And, um, it was great thanks to sort of the contractors that sort of raced out there, got the water off, um, disconnected power, and so they could then get the, um, operation back up and running with the help of some of the guys from the Mount Isa City Council staff as well. So it was great to see that they all got together. And also how well that Martin and the staff at Outback at Isa have sort of rebounded from this disaster. They've made a little interim cafe, um, and they continue to do the catering work and the, as all the other commitments that they had. So sort of showing great resilience in a sort of, a bit of a disaster time for them. They, um, always seem to be having some little things go wrong there, so they seem to be sort of handling it well. Again, yep, congratulations to, uh, two new directors, Andrew and Kelvin. Um, wishing them all the best and looking forward to all the changes that's gonna be coming. And we'll see them within the city, um, change coming up. Uh, congratulations to all the awards recipients at the annual S E S Awards, uh, ceremony that councillor Tully and I attended. Um, well done to councillor Tully, he's not here, and, uh, sort of congratulating his pronunciation of meritorious. He sort of was struggling on that word for a bit and he, uh, he got the, he got it, uh, got it out twice in, in his speech. And he was, I think he was quite proud of himself as well with that one, so. And last but not least, let's go Queensland for tonight.
Thank you, yeah, and I really would, um, like to thank the councillors and the deputy mayor for stepping up and doing a lot of those duties while I've been so busy taking care of other things, so thanks team. Um, councillor Coglan?
Yes, yeah, thanks. Um, I, I'd like to welcome Andrew and Kelvin. Um, I think you already know what sort of council we are. And, uh, you're still here, so that's good. But I think we're, we're starting to, um, to get assembled a, a pretty good team to, to take us forward, so that's good. Um, like to, um, congratulate those who were involved with the Food and Wine Festival on Saturday night. I understand it was quite a success and, um, and those, uh, if you put things on, people will come, um, and, and they did for that night, and it's, it's always a wonderful night. Um, I did meet a few of the people the next day and, um, I could tell it was a wonderful night. Um, this Saturday is Free Plant Day or Go Green Day. Um, excuse me, nine to two, so make sure you come along. Registrations have closed, but if there's plants left over towards the end, you can, you can grab some. Um, there's lots of experts there who can help you. Um, there'll be different, um, uh, giveaways and so forth. Um, so make sure you come down and, and grab a, a plant to put in the garden and set your goal to have it alive next year. Um, I'm fifty for fifty, I, I've killed one, still got one in there. Um, also like to wish the Mount Isa Race Club all the best next week for the Mount Isa Cup Day. I, I always say it's not just one of the biggest events in North Queensland racing, it's one of the biggest events in North West Queensland. Um, the amount of people there, and one of the things, um, I've been working at the Underground Hospital and the perception of Mount Isa, like, it's great to talk to those people. Um, they think the mine is closing. And you, you say to them, no, no, it's not. It's the underground section, um, and you explain it to them, but they're from the city, they find it very hard to, um, comprehend. But just to try and say, you know, like, it's, it's all positive here, and trying to give that feedback to them. And the number of them who come here to see their kids who are working here, um, really, uh, blows my mind. And they're really surprised at what's out here and they love what's out here. And when I talk to them about their kids, they say they've loved it here. Um, the thing that is going against us is still that cost, the cost to get in and out of here. And if we can somehow fix that, then the young professionals that come here, it'll be easier to attract them. And once they get here and they have kids and they, and they realise the value of living in this place, um, you know, they'll stay. What do you, how many people come for three months, here for thirty years type of thing? Hey, uh, madam mayor.
It happens.
And in that thing, I talked at the Underground Hospital to some people from Virgin Airlines and, um, they're sending a bigger plane here, um, at different times because, um, they want to test out the waters, so, so that's good. Um, and I'd also, um, like to thank you, madam mayor, and, and Tim. Um, I'm not really into all of that big deal stuff with politicians and that. Um, I like to work with the local people, the little people, and, and make sure that we're efficient and, um, work within the community. So, um, I think we've got the right people in there, um, championing our cause. Um, and I'd just like to thank you for your efforts and congratulate you on what you've achieved so far, and I hope, uh, I hope it continues.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. I don't think we've achieved too much yet, but let's hope it's close.
Um, through the chair, just, um, a couple of things. I'd like to, um, it's a day late, but I'd like to say a big uh, happy birthday, uh, ninetieth birthday to Inez Bocos, um, who turned ninety yesterday. So, um, congratulations on that. Um, also a big congratulations has to go to Meals on Wheels, who, um, won the Community Volunteering Impact Award over in Townsville a few weeks ago. And I know Lucy Sanderson went over, um, to represent Meals on Wheels and was there to accept the award, which was really great to see. And I think we all do know the impact that they do have on a lot of families in Mount Isa. And I would just like to shout out there for anyone that can even spend one half a day, a, um, half a day a month just helping deliver, um, meals for them. Because it is, they're not only cooked, but because they haven't got enough drivers, then they have to go and deliver the meals. So anyone that can spare a little bit of time, that would be great. And a big congratulation to, now, I know there's a lot of people involved in this, uh, event, but I dealt with Yvette and Emma. Um, they helped put on the Combined Undereights Day last Friday at Creashnet Oval. Great day again to all the stall holders, you did a wonderful job. Um, the kids really, really enjoy it. It's only, it's three to five on the Friday afternoon. I think it ends the whole week when they have all their undereights days. But just a big congratulations, um, to everyone involved with that. And also congratulations to, I know with our rats, the, um, running and triathlon people. They, uh, put on a junior triathlon two weeks ago, not triathlon, sorry, duathlon. They did a swim and a ride. A swim and a run around Creashnet Oval, and I think it was very well received. So it's good to see that they're still putting something on for the juniors. And again, to all the people out there, instead of whinging and getting on Facebook, get out and volunteer.
Thank you deputy mayor, and that, that brings up, you know, the point, last year I got to go to all of the schools under age, so that's kind of my thing, I love to get to. And I didn't get to any, any this year because of just the timing of when we had to go away. So I have missed a few things lately, but hopefully next year, everything will be back in order and I'll be able to get to all of those events. Okay, um, we might, will we break? Okay, I'd like to move that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section, section two hundred and fifty four J of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve, fifteen point one, Myco Finance Overview Report, April twenty twenty five. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two hundred and fifty four J G of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. End items, fifteen point two, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Fifteen point three, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, concession application rates. Assessment number one O O five three four O three and utility account number two one one four eight six one four. Fifteen point four, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, concession application rates assessment number one, uh, zero 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 one five two seven and utility account number two one one zero one two seven four. These matters are considered to be confidential under section two hundred and fifty four J D of the Local Government Regulation. And the council is satisfied that discussion on this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions. Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Second it deputy.
Okay, thank you. So we might just quickly break, because I think Zara wanted to.
Second.
Thank you, councillor Crouther, all in favour? Carrie. Do I have a mover for fifteen point one, myco finance overview report, April twenty twenty five?
Now I move that council receives and accepts the April twenty twenty five myco finance overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Crouther, do I have a second?
Councillor Coglan.
Councillor Coglan, all in favour? Carrie. Um, item fifteen point two, intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, councillor Ballad.
I'd like to recommend that council resolves to a, sell the land in the below schedule pursuant to section one forty two in the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, and b, delegate to the chief executive officer its power to. One, give a notice of intention to sell the land to all interested parties under section one forty three of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, and two, take all further steps required under sections one forty one, one forty two, one forty three, one forty four, one forty five and one forty six of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve to affect the sale of the land.
Thank you, do I have a second for the motion?
Seconded, Coglan, deputy.
Thank you, deputy mayor, um, all in favour? Thank you, Carrie. Item fifteen point three, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges concession application rates assessment number one zero zero five three four oh three and utility account number two one one four eight six one four.
I'd like to move that council resolves to decline to grant a concession to the applicant under section one twenty one b of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve by way of an agreement to defer payment of rates and charges levied on the land allocated rates assessment number one zero zero five three four zero three and utility account number two one one four eight six one four.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Seconded, deputy Coglan.
Thank you councillor Coglan, all in favour? Carrie. Item number fifteen point four, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges concession application rates assessment number one zero 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 one five two seven and utility account number two one one zero one two seven four. Do I have a mover? Yes, are you allowed to?
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just changing the recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Uh, councillors, just for your information there, it's been a development since the recommendation was made to council and a significant payment has been made overnight, so we're, we've given an alternative recommendation to council ballot to read out.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to move that council resolves to decline to grant a concession to the applicant under section one twenty one b of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve by way of an agreement to defer payment of rates and charges levied on the land allocated rates assessment number one zero 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 one five two seven and utility account number two one one zero one two seven four. And the council resolves not to start the procedures mentioned in section one forty two of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve to sell lot two on Crown Plant, M P H three zero two double six for overdue rates and charges.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Seconded, deputy Coglan.
Thank you, deputy mayor, all in favour? Carrie. There being no further agenda items, the time is eighteen